Okay, we'll go ahead and call the meeting to order and we'll start off with the Pledge of Allegiance. We have tax claims and abatements. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Second. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote. Oh, I apologize. Actually, I just zoomed right ahead. We actually need to do a roll call as to who is actually here today.
Commissioner Look.
Here.
Commissioner Brassad.
Here.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Here.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Here.
Commissioner Schulte.
Here.
All right. So many things on the agenda. I was just ready to zoom right ahead. Apologize for that. All right, so tax claims and abatements been moved in second. Is there a roll call vote?
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Right.
Commissioner Silveraja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gomash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. We have the review of checks issued from Finance and Central Services and from Human Services. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Moved by Commissioner Look. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Gomash. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We have approval of a minutes from our September 8th County Board Meeting. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Additions or corrections? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple of items under Chair's remarks today. And I know that Judge O'Fallon is here with us and he's on a very tight schedule, so I'm gonna juggle things up a little bit. But we're very honored to have Judge Daniel O'Fallon of the Anoka County 10th District Court with us today. In just a few minutes, the Board will be voting to approve a contract to move forward with crucial public safety improvements in the areas of the courthouse. And I'd like to ask Judge O'Fallon to say a few words as we officially mark the occasion of this project. Welcome.
Thank you. Chairman Silveraja, Board members, thank you for allowing me a few minutes to speak today. As you know, about a year ago, you approved renovations to the courthouse that we thought were vital, and I believe you believe were vital, for the safety and security of Anoka County residents. Since that time, we have been meeting with our Justice Department partners and Joel Dunning and his Wold team to put together final design plans for that construction. And that, I just really wanna credit first the Board. Thank you so much for allowing us to do this and to move forward. Second, our Justice Partners. Again, the Anoka County Attorney's Office, the Anoka County Public Defender's Office, the private bar through the Anoka County Bar Association, the city prosecutors, the Sheriff's Department in particular, Corrections, and the bailiffs have all been meeting together to really come up with a design plan that is going to allow us to move into the next phase of the courthouse. As you might know, the big focus of this was what we call Courtroom 300. That is our arraignment calendar for people who are in custody. We've had a number of challenges in that courtroom. We continue. There was a hole in the back wall the other day and we found out there was nothing behind that but actually wallboard. Not, and that would then lead out into Judges' Chambers, so there was a little bit of disconcert there. But we got that taken care of on a temporary basis. But what's really gonna come out here is a design that's really meant to provide a secure and safe facility. That's designed to allow defendants to flow through this process, that keeps our court staff safe, that keeps the attorneys safe, that keeps the defendants safe. Some of who is, I think I've told you before, you know, the fact of the matter is we issue warrants for all different things. If you failed to show up for driving after revocation, you could have a warrant with $200 bond, but if you can't pose that, that means you're gonna be in jail. Or you could be sitting next to someone who's there on a warrant for much more serious crimes and you still have to come to the same procedure. So, working with everybody, we were able to put together a great design. But it really required the help of everybody and for everybody to come together. Now, I'd love to tell you it's perfect, but I'm sure as soon as it's constructed, we're gonna say we should've done that right. But I do think, especially with the 3D modeling that Wold was able to put together, you know, it really allowed people to visualize, so we could actually almost visualize ourself in these courtrooms and say, you know, that doesn't work, or this doesn't work, or let's do this a little different and this a little different. Another thing we're excited about, we're working with the County Attorney's Office and we're hoping to apply for some state funds available through State Court Administration to have technologically advanced courtrooms. What I'm really talking about is the ability for display technology to be used during big trials. Currently, we really don't have much of anything. Parties have to bring in their own and that can really be a challenge for jurors. So, I think overall, we're moving forward. I think everything so far is on budget. I think that's always good news for all of us. And with that, I just wanna thank you all again for looking at this, for hearing our concerns, and for helping us move forward and allowing all of us. And when I say us, I'm not talking about just the courts. I'm talking about court administration, the public defenders, the private attorneys, the private bar, and the citizens allowing us to do our job and even better and hopefully more efficient manner. Any questions?
Questions, comments?
Madam Chair, I just wanted to comment that we've just had a tremendous, I think, experience in this whole process. This is, retrofitting this building is not an easy project. And these are one of the more difficult projects out there.
Yeah.
You're not building from the ground up. You're trying to find out what's there or what isn't there, as you mentioned, and try and figure out how we can fix these things. We've kinda moved to a construction management model, I believe, Andrew, is what we are working with. And Brett Baldry, of course, is on that end of it. Joel Dunick with Wold is just, I mean, they've put together a fantastic project. And the whole project team on the bench, you know, as far as all the judges involved and the comments there and everybody contributing. I think that this is, while we may find some surprises, I think we've really come up with a project that's fantastic. I wanna thank everyone involved.
Well, thank you. And, you know, again, I think having people experienced in, you know, just getting people to come in and sit down and being willing to give up the time to come in and say, hey, you know, this won't work exactly this way. You know, especially when we're talking about like our court clerks, you know, where it would be better for them to be positioned, our court reporters, where they can get the best record to be made, and then security, where they can best keep track of everybody and make sure everybody's safe and secure. You know, and frankly, they all have expertise that any one of us individually simply doesn't have. And so, getting them to come in and being willing to participate in this, and I think to have buy-in to the process, hopefully is going to serve us well. I sent an email out to my colleagues and told them where we were at and then encouraged their tolerance for the next two and a half years. And I'm gonna ask that of the public as well. There's no way this project won't have some level of disruption. It will certainly have some level of disruption in how the courts operate. But again, I think if we keep our eye on the goal at the end, that we can work with and handle any intermediate disruption. With that.
Madam Chair, I won't reiterate everything Commissioner Look said, although I feel the same way. I just wanna speak to the, how long overdue this is. This is a project that should've been done 15 or 20 years ago. The reason it wasn't done, disruption's probably one of the biggest. What do you do with court for two and a half years while you're remodeling? How do you stage it? That's been worked through really keenly by our construction manager and architects. And the disruption for two and a half years, it's, that's a big deal. It's gonna be tough on our judges, tough on our jurists. And hopefully, everybody can bear with it because the end product is important and I think it'll come out nice. Again, the other, the other reason for a 10 or 15-year delay or 20-year delay is cost. It's hugely expensive. But it's a public safety measure that's long overdue and I'm anxious to get it started.
Well, we appreciate the wonderful partnership that we've had and look forward to continuing to see this whole project come to fruition.
As do we and more than happy to come back anytime for updates. I promise all, I won't share the complaints, I'll just say the.
Commissioner Cordiak.
And thank you, ma'am. Here, I thought about commenting, but Commissioner Schulte's observation is correct. It is somewhat overdue. And yet, when's the right time? That move is very complicated. It's very complex. There's many, many actors. You've got public oversight all the time, every day. You've got safety issues that have been problematic for 15 years. And hopefully, we can address many of those. It will be a time that will, a project that will take a long time. But I hope it's gonna be a lasting improvement to the court, the court system. Now, the court systems and its needs change from time to time, so you have to be, hopefully build a flexible enough environment that you can meet those future changes. But I hope that whatever we build is good. I'm glad to see you're investing in technology there. You know, I've long supported ITV.
Yeah.
In terms of interactive opportunity, in my view, we can never do enough of them, but that's another story. But congratulations to you, Your Honor.
Well, and you know, we are moving to an electronic filing system that's gonna now be mandatory in the summer of next year. That has been a struggle in some instances. I think I've told you before. For me personally, I came from a very technologically advanced firm. So, for me, it's less of a struggle because I went through that pain many years ago and learned that. But, you know, it's always difficult when people are faced with change and I think that's what the electronics are. But I think at the end, overall, we will serve the public better and move into the next century. We have to do that. That's how the rest of private business works nowadays. You know, more and more, it's electronically based. Paper is frankly, it's not disappearing. I won't ever say that because there's always some level at which people take comfort and there's a requirement to have a certain amount of final record out there. But, but the business, the workaday world, works through electronics. You see it with your kids. I mean, goodness, they can do things that we don't even understand what to do, unfortunately sometimes.
I've been doing this for a long time. I didn't see paper. I don't remember what it was.
Madam Chair, just to comment, I wanna appreciate Judge O'Fallon's leadership on this. Out of his 16 colleagues, Judge O'Fallon has stepped up to take the leadership role and is very, very helpful in moving this forward. So, certainly from our office's perspective, certainly appreciate his leadership in this. Thanks, Judge.
Well, like with all volunteer opportunities, maybe I just failed to step back.
Every reason you're in the role.
For me, this has been a lot of fun. I don't know all of the history. I know some of the history. You know, I've only been here five and a half years, which for me seems like a long time, but I know in the overall scheme, it's not. I think it's just been wonderful, the cooperation we've had and people willing to move forward on this. So, for me, it's really been easy because frankly, everybody has stepped up and been extraordinarily cooperative and willing and able to give their time and expertise to the project.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate you being here.
Madam Chair, I just don't wanna forget our facilities and finance teams. They put their heart and soul into making sure this worked out and it's a big project. Andrew's team and Cory's team all work really hard to make sure that this project could happen on budget.
Yeah, it's, we've really enjoyed working with your folks. You know, Andrew's been great. We've gotten to know each other fairly well on both an impersonal and electronic basis in the last couple of years. And I appreciate being kept in the loop on everything.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Our next item, although we're providing special recognition today, domestic violence should really have our attention each and every day because the abuse, neglect, manipulation, and violence continues to occur every day, not only across this country, but right here in Anoka County. I'd like to ask Commissioner West to introduce our guest.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I've been honored to support Alexandra House for the whole tenure of my time on the county board. And I'm not overstating it to say that theirs is a life-saving mission. Every day, domestic violence claims lives and emotionally and mentally scars those who survive it. And, you know, I think with the internet, we read about things all over the country that happen this way. And I think it's important that we fight against it and we raise the awareness of it. And Connie Moore is the Executive Director of Alexandra House, who I am privileged to have known all these years. And I welcome you today and we'd like to hear a few words from you if you wish.
Thank you so much for having me here this morning, Madam Chair and Board members. Again, my name is Connie Moore and I'm the Executive Director at Alexandra House and I've been doing this work for a long time, over 30 years, which to me, I can't believe it sometimes. I just tell everybody I started when I was 10. There's been a lot of changes over the years, not only in the work that's being done to raise the awareness and to fight domestic violence throughout the nation, but also throughout the world. And certainly at Alexandra House, there's been a lot of growth and changes in how we do our work. Our mission is to empower victims of domestic and sexual violence and inspire social change through education, support, and advocacy. And that's what we work hard to do every single day. And the Walk for Hope, which is coming up this Saturday, is one of our ways of really educating the community and supporting victims who are survivors and supporting families and friends of those who've lost family members and loved ones. So, it's a, it's one of our largest events and it's a lot of fun, even though it's a sober issue. Folks have a good time and they learn a lot. As folks said this morning, this is a huge issue. One in three women in the United States will be a victim of domestic violence in their lifetime. That's huge. We provide a lot of different services. We have our 24-hour emergency shelter. And then we have our advocacy services out in the community where we're involved in many different projects and areas. We served 577 women in 2014 through our emergency shelter. That equates to 11,330 nights of shelter. Approximately 50% of our shelter residents are Anoka County women and children. We do not turn away Anoka County families, even if we're full. We figure out how to make things work and get those families in because they need to be safe. When a woman or a victim leaves an abusive relationship, that is the most dangerous time for that individual and her children. If you see what happens, I mean, like on the internet or in the news, many times women who have been murdered to their children is because they've said, "I'm leaving" or they've tried to leave. And that's the most dangerous time. So, that shelter is important. It is our smallest program in terms of the numbers of folks that we serve, though. The work that we're doing out in the community, we serve many more individuals through those services. Our crisis line takes about 9,000 calls a year. And I would say that's undercounted because I know there are times that they don't all get locked. So, we do receive a lot of crisis calls through our emergency crisis lines. We also are involved with both Mercy and Unity Hospital and have been working with them since the late 80s, actually. I can remember working with Marlene Jezerski, who was the nurse manager at Unity Emergency Department back in the day when we were going and meeting with victims onsite at the emergency room. That program has grown over the years as well and we respond 24/7 to both victims of domestic and sexual violence. And that's, I'm gonna put a plug in for volunteers on that one because we really need volunteers to maintain the services that we're providing through that particular program. It's a lot of work and we need help on that. 188 victims of sexual and domestic violence were seen onsite at either Unity or Mercy Hospital last year. And we already doubled that amount this year. We also have therapy and support services, so we have onsite therapy services. And then we have a number of different support groups. And we've served over 350 women and children through those services in 2014. We have seven support groups that are offered weekly. We also provide support groups for the children who are in the shelter. Our legal advocacy services, we have an office up here in Anoka County and our staff there work with victims who are going through the criminal or civil court process. We help to hook them up with free or low-cost family law assistance with attorneys. We've served over 925 clients through legal support and crisis intervention in 2014, assisted in clients filing 140 orders for protection. And through our lethality assessment program, which has been in place for about, what, four or five years with the County Attorney's Office, the sheriff, and local law enforcement, we're maintaining a really high level of follow-up with victims. So, 81% of victims who have been assessed as being at high risk continue to work with us, which is huge because that's part of that program. The biggest piece is hooking up victims with those services so that they can maintain their safety and participate in the process. A new program, well, this isn't really new. We have our follow-up program and that's where we do in-home support services, case management. So, we're working with families in their home after their initial crisis. We have, we worked with 125 families and we provided those ongoing support services, housing, financial assistance, which is huge. One of the things that we found is, once that crisis is over, there's still issues. There's still barriers that families are facing. And they need that ongoing support, our help in hooking them up with more community resources, looking at where, you know, job training, employment, education, those kinds of things. And then we have our own food shelf, which last year, we distributed 10,000 pounds of food. Our youth services program, we're in all school districts in Anoka County now. And we do presentations in middle schools and high schools and all the high schools. We're onsite at the high schools every week, providing individual support, advocacy, classroom presentations, working with staff and ensuring that students are getting the information they need to learn about what's a healthy relationship or if they're experiencing violence, what are their options and working with them and their families and trying to figure out what they can do to remedy those issues. And as you can see, we served individually 1,370 students in 2014 with those individual services and then reached 7,250 through classroom presentations. This is a fairly new service. We've always served older adults, but with a federal grant that actually the Anoka County Attorney's Office was able to secure through the Office of Violence Against Women. We're now starting to reach more older victims of domestic violence. And this is a whole new area in terms of just the complexity. We've just started actually providing the direct services. The first part of that grant was a lot of training. And now, we're out there working with individuals who are experiencing violence in their homes, either with, from adult children or other family members, or pretty much is the most of the issues that we're dealing with at this point. We want folks to know that if you know somebody or if you yourself are in a situation where you think you might be being abused or even financially exploited, to please call Alexandra House and we can help you work through some of those things and hook you up with the services that you might need to stay safe or remedy some of the things that are going on. This is a three-year grant. We're in the third year now, so we're working with adult protection and law enforcement and many other folks in partnership with this particular grant. And then our community education and professional training program, we go out and we'll talk to anybody who wants to talk to us. We'll provide education, information to anyone who wants to learn more about domestic violence and sexual violence. We also participate in professional trains with law enforcement, healthcare, and other professionals to ensure that folks have all the information they need to respond appropriately and know that we're there to help. And we did, we reached over, around 3,800 community members through this program last year. So, in total, in 2014, we served 3,072 women, men, children, and youth at, through all of our services at Alexandra House. And I would be in trouble with my volunteer coordinator if I didn't talk about our volunteer opportunities. We are currently in the middle of one of our volunteer trainings. It's a 50-hour training. It's a pretty intensive training. And if you're wanting to work with women and kids, direct service as we call it, you must go through that 50-hour training. There are other volunteer options that don't require you to go through that training and those are also available. And you just need to call and we'll get you more information, or you can go to our website and get information on that as well. And I think one of the things that makes it possible for Alexandra House to continue to provide the services that we provide and to look at how we can do things differently and provide new services as the community needs become apparent is because of the support we get from the community, whether it's the county board here or other partners in the community. That's how we make happen what happens. This is not something that Alexandra House can do alone, nor do we want to. It really involves the whole community and understanding this is a problem and here's what I can do to make a difference and here's what I can do to help. So, I'm hoping that we have a lot of folks at our Walk for Hope on Saturday. It's gonna be a beautiful day, from what I understand, so that's a good thing. It's fun and lots of kids, dogs. We have a good time. So, our website, we're on Facebook, Twitter, and blog. And by the way, we will be launching a new website shortly. We were hoping to do that by the end of July and that didn't happen, but it'll be happening probably in the next few weeks. So, take, you know, keep your eyes open for that. It's a brand-new website and much more user-friendly, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Any questions or comments for Connie at all? Commissioner Gomash.
Connie, thank you for coming and thank you for the work that you're doing. And I know that there's probably other people out there that might've forgotten, it's a busy time of the year. Our schools are starting things and we forgot about Saturday, the walk, and that they can come right on Saturday. They can sign up. They can make their donation and everything and join us at, join you at 8 o'clock on Saturday morning at Bunker Hills Regional Park Pavilion Number 3, which I'm gonna try to get over there.
Yes. Yes, if you haven't registered, you can come and register right there at the walk. So, hope to see you all there. I know some folks aren't able to make it, but it's gonna be a good time. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Great. And with that, I would ask that you join me in supporting Resolution 2015-104, proclaiming October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Anoka County. All those in favor, I'll offer the resolution. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you and we look forward to seeing you on Saturday.
Thank you.
Okay, now we will move on to committee reports. Commissioner West, the first one is Management Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The things on the regular agenda are informational, but there are two additional. 1A is a reclassification in Finance and Central Services. It's going from a 1FTE Risk Management Supervisor Grade 14 to a 1FTE Central Services Director Grade 17.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Mr. Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The next item is in Human Services and Community Corrections. It's due to a vacancy through a promotion. It's going from a 1FTE Juvenile Detention Officer Grade Eleven oh eight to a 1FTE Probation Officer Grade Twelve. And this is just further updating the need for the probation officers due to the closing of the medium security location.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Brassad, seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Madam Chair, that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Moving on to Transportation Committee Report, Commissioner Schulte.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our committee had the opportunity to meet on September fourteenth. We have three items for our action today. The committee recommends approval of a resolution authorizing acquisition of right-of-way for a trail project located on Lake George Boulevard, south of Bridge Street, in the cities of St. Francis and Oak Grove.
Is there an offer of the resolution?
I will offer.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Look. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair, just as a way of explanation, this is a small section of trailway that will help connect the future project of the two roundabouts up in St. Francis with portions south.
Thank you. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Next, the committee recommends approval of a no-parking resolution on Fawn Lake Drive from twelve hundred feet west of East Tyco Lake Drive to three hundred feet west of East Tyco Lake Drive, as requested by the Lindwood Township and the Anoka Conservation District.
And I will offer the resolution. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Next item?
And lastly, the committee recommends award of a contract in the amount of two hundred and sixty-four thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars, thirty-three cents, to North Valley for an Anoka County project, which is the right-turn lane addition on eastbound one hundred and ninth at Highway sixty-five in Blaine.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I just wanna say, this is, speaking of long overdue, long overdue, I think that it's, it's, probably not gonna make it perfect, but it's gonna improve the situation immensely.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schulte.
I would just comment that this is truly a Band-Aid until we can get an overpass there. And when MinDOT, City of Blaine, and Oak County works together to make that happen, we will improve that area vastly. Until then, this is a much-needed Band-Aid.
Roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And Madam Chair, just under informational items, I'll just point out that we did direct staff to look at our deer carcass and beaver control, as we let those contracts, or perhaps separating those, to see if we can get more favorable contracts, and still put it up together as a package as well, to see if somebody wants to come in that way. Nonetheless, the contracts do, and are up for renewal, so we wanna make sure our options are open, and make sure we get the best service combined with the best price.
Right.
With that, that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Schulte. Moving on to Finance and Capital Improvements Committee Report, Commissioner Look.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Finance and Capital Improvements Committee met on September fifteenth. We have a few action items, first of which is the celebration of the courts remodel project through the, these action items. The first is the committee recommends the county board approve the following contracts for completion of the courts remodeling project, and the total project cost not to exceed five million, six hundred and thirty-four thousand, two hundred dollars. There's an additional contingency, about a nine percent contingency, I believe, of five hundred thousand dollars in there. As was indicated, with the construction management process that we're using here, the bids, I think, came in under budget, we're kinda crossing every T and dotting every I, so our hope is, the five hundred thousand is there for unforeseen issues, but I think it's been very well communicated, this is not for add-ons and embellishments and things of that nature, and so hopefully we can kinda keep close guard on that nine percent, and ultimately, if that's not spent, it's not part of the project in the end. The first is a contract for tariff construction of Eden Prairie for general construction services and ceiling replacement, in the amount not to exceed three million, seventy thousand dollars. Second contract is with Breath Zenzen Fire Protection. As commissioners will recall, the construction of this project required that we put fire suppression throughout the whole facility, not a cheap undertaking, as you can see, a five hundred and thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollar contract there. Third contract is with Cool Air Mechanical of Ham Lake for mechanical services and ceiling replacement, in the amount not to exceed seven hundred and fifty-two thousand. And the fourth contract is with Continuity Electrical Contractor of Vandover for electrical services and ceiling replacement, in the amount not to exceed one million, two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars. This is, again, not a, an easy project to do, and I think all these contractors will be put to their test in terms of making sure it all flows together and comes out in a complete project that are most reasonably happy with in the end, so.
Okay, is there a motion to approve items one, A through D?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
I just need to comment how thrilled I am that we have some local contractors that are a part of this project, some of them in Anoka County, some here in Minnesota, but truly local contractors, so we can keep those construction dollars local. Very pleased.
Absolutely. Further discussion? Okay, hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
A motion carries. The next item, actually, we are going to pull from the agenda, and bring it back at a later time, once all the details can be worked out. So do we need a motion to, or can we, I just pull it? Okay.
All right. We'll go ahead and pull that from the agenda. Moving on to Social Services, consider recommending the county board enter into the following contracts for family-based services at rates based on sixty-minute units from October first, two thousand and fifteen, through June thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen, the contract with Accurate Home Care LLC, with Family-Based Therapy Associates, Family Innovations, Nystrom and Associates, Therapy Connections, Village Ranch, Kent Circle, and Muna Dates Latina Sunades. So I have a, I will move those contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Kodiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamasch.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
Madam Chair, the first one is Management Committee Report. 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 The next item, actually, we are going to pull from the agenda and bring it back at a later time once all the details can be worked out. So do we need a motion to? Or can we, I just pull it? Okay.
Here's prerogative.
All right. We'll go ahead and pull that from the agenda. Moving on to Social Services. Consider recommending the county board enter into the following contracts for family-based services at rates based on 60-minute units from October 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2018. The contract with Accurate Home Care LLC, with Family-Based Therapy Associates, Family Innovations, Nystrom and Associates, Therapy Connections, Village Ranch, Kent Circle, and Muna Dades Latina Sunitas. So I have a, I will move those contracts. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item, consider recommending the county board enter into memorandum of understanding with Alexander House accepting grant funds in the amount of $81,770 for additional case management services to vulnerable adults from October 1st, 2015 with extensions through September 30th, 2017. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries. Under Community Corrections, consider recommending the county board enter into contract with River Place Counseling Center for chemical dependency treatment services at the Anoka County Workhouse. And this is something that we have been talking about for quite some time and we're pleased to have pieces in place to be able to move forward with that. Is there a motion to approve?
Move it.
There a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries. And I will offer Resolution 2015 HS19, the Economic Assistance Bill. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Motion carries. And that concludes my report. Moving on to Information Technology Committee report, Commissioner West.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My items are informational. I'll just point out the first one that the committee approved a request for proposals for new public health information management system and that's another item that's urgently needed to make their organization be more efficient.
Thank you, Commissioner West.
Includes my report.
Moving on to Intergovernmental and Community Relations Committee Chair report, Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's just one recommendation that the county board approve, contract with DC Library for medical examiner transporter services in the southern half of St. Louis County in the amount of $700 for a single run or $1,100 for a double. This contract is from October 1st, 2015 through December 31st, 2016.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Commissioner.
Just a point of clarification, my document says 600 for an initial run?
No, what did I say?
Seven.
Oh, okay, well.
600 is correct.
Okay.
And our
Savings.
And our, our contract with them covers the first $275 of that. Anything over that 275 is paid by that contract by St. Louis County.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I might remind members of the public that we have a contract with St. Louis County, which is why we're voting on, on something for St. Louis County. Somebody's just tuning in, they may not realize that, so.
Sure. Thank you very much. All right, further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
A motion carries. And anything else?
No, that concludes my report.
I'll just note, since we're talking about intergovernmental and many times that has to do with discussions with legislators, but also our relationships with the local school boards and city councils. And we have Mayor Steve Keen from St. Francis here today with us, as well as the administrator. And could you introduce, would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure. I'm Steve Keen, I'm the mayor of St. Francis.
I'm Joe Coleman, I'm the city administrator for the city of St. Francis.
Mark Bosman, I'm the president of the Rec. Committee in St. Francis.
Fantastic, well, welcome. We're happy to have you here. Okay, we will move on to Internal Audit Committee report.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'll just say, first of all, the items are for information purposes only today. We were pleased, we were sort of see Orr Naihus leave the board, he's served us for many years. We're very pleased to bring Brian Page on board. He's the chief administrative officer of Infinite Campus, which is important business in Anoka County, a lovely campus, a growing enterprise with a nationwide impact on storing school record documentation. So we're very pleased to have him on that committee. We certainly, he understands the two things we want, which were ID and finance. He'll do an excellent, he'd be an excellent addition. I'll just comment beyond that, 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 that we spend our days in the internal audit. Chuck Dennehy continues to looking at exposure that he might see a possibility in Anoka County. Kind of sometimes, it's not always real exciting stuff. But with his petty cash or on-base systems, he spends his days making sure that vulnerabilities that we have with staff and public interaction and so on is secure. And that's what the rest of this report's about. That concludes my report.
Thank you very much, Commissioner. Now we'll move on to Property Records and Taxation Committee Chair report.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I'm going to ask Pam to come forward. She's kind of leading a, a, well, I'll tell you, she's leading a witch hunt in Anoka County. If I can say that. But, 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 you know, a number of months ago, she had turned her eyes in the direction of little slivers and pieces and parts of property throughout all of Anoka County that are kind of homeless, landlocked, pieces of property that can really only be enjoyed by people who share borders with them. And we have found numerous of them. I think this board, working with me and the committee, made some decisions to price those things responsibly. And we'll talk someday about how the outcome of that sale is. But I think that we made good progress in terms of getting some of that property into the hands of people who enjoy those, those properties. I'm very pleased to see that. The second set of eyes in this case, I'll ask Pam to carry it from there, begins to look at properties that might potentially be a greatest availability to public exposures. They are city, they're by city parks, they're at city intersections, they're along city properties. There are different, different kinds of opportunities. They may have had the opportunity to buy them before, they may have been whatever. But I think we see great opportunity there to get those pieces back in the hands of those jurisdictions that would have an interest in them. So I think we're going to talk about it here a little bit, and Pam, maybe you can just lead us, I could. But lead me through items one and two and talk about what's going on here.
Madam Chair, Commissioner Cordiak, I'm Pamela Blom, Director of Property Records and Taxation. We're in the process right now of going through our forfeit inventory. Some of the parcels that are on that inventory are, have been on there for a very long time. We do solicit to each city at the time they become forfeit to see if there's any interest in acquiring those parcels. But sometimes several years have, have gone by, things have changed, different people enrolls at the city level. So we're kind of reaching out to each city to see if there's any interest in acquiring those for public purpose or public use. These 10 parcels are in the city of Blaine. They are parcels that the city of Blaine is interested in acquiring for conservation. First, we need to classify them as conservation because they are going to be using them for storm drainage. I do anticipate, we've got about 20 more parcels that we're working on with cities. We are reaching out to each individual city, contacting them regarding the parcels that are on our forfeit inventory within their city. So we will have approximately 20 more applications by governmental subs coming in the near future.
So Madam Chair, item number one is regarding Resolution 2015 PRT-7, regarding classifying some of these parcels that we are preparing for sale, describing it as, as, as conservation properties. I'll offer it.
Okay, resolution has been offered. Is there further discussion?
Madam Chair, just a question.
Commissioner.
How large are these pieces of property usually? Are they relatively small? They just edging up against parkland or, or roads, or how do they work?
Some of them can be fairly larger. There, there are, I do have maps available if anyone would like to look at these. These are fairly larger tracts, but they are low land, they are already being used for storm drainage. So it makes sense to put them in their right place.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed? Motion carries.
And secondarily, Madam Chair, the items that we talked about here, part of this process then, Blaine has had an interest in these properties. I expect that we hear from other communities as we begin to talk to them and learn more about their willingness and interest is. Can I offer A through H as resol, maybe Commissioner West would like to?
I'd like to offer those resolutions.
Thank you. I'll second it, Madam Chair.
So the Resolution 2,
A.
A through J. A through J.
I'm sorry.
Which actually are Resolutions 2015 PRT-8 through PRT-17. And that's been offered by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries.
And that concludes my report, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Cordiak. Moving on to Public Safety Committee report, Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We met on September 15th, have a few action items. The committee recommends approval and execution of the 2015 Emergency Management Performance Grant in the amount of $116,234 for the development, maintenance, and improvement of local emergency management programs.
Okay, is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
There a second?
I'll second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends approval and execution of the 2016-2017 Radiological Emergency Preparedness Grant in the amount not to exceed $12,000 for a term July 1st, 2015 through June 30th, 2017. This will ensure training and a constant state of readiness and compliance with the Federal Emergency Management Agency and emergency response plan for nuclear power plants.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends approval and execution of the 2016 Law Enforcement Contract with the city of Oak Grove. The city agrees to pay Anoka County the sum of $575,833 for services rendered.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Gamash. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Brassad. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next item?
The committee recommends approval and execution of the Off-Highway Vehicle Enforcement Grant with the state of Minnesota acting through its Commissioner of National Resources and the Anoka County Sheriff's Office. The total obligation of the state will not exceed $20,860. And it's broken up in over two years, 2016 and 2017.
Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move it.
Been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved by Commissioner Schulte, seconded by Commissioner Gamash. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. We'll move on to Recycling and Resource Solutions Committee report, Commissioner Cordiak.
Thank you, Madam Chair. There's only a couple items that need attention. One of them you've seen about 28 times now, probably before you. We would have some exposure to state sales tax. If our fee at the RDF facility, which we still provide some financial support for, were above the rate that we can otherwise dispose of waste material. Clearly, as we compare ourselves to Elk River Landfill, we are roughly half that rate. We're just identifying that. Our current identifying rate is $33.88, the lowest market price for solid waste disposal services. I will offer it.
Resolution's been offered by Commissioner Cordiak. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
And secondarily, Madam Chair, little do you realize that when you go pick up some pest control at your local whatever, you do have to pay a small fee that, that, that's paid to the Department of Agriculture, which they accumulate, and they will disperse to entities like the Anoka County Waste, Household Has Waste Facility. And so we are, we have the opportunity to get some remuneration for waste material, pesticide waste that we collect. They simply have redrafted their contract agreement, attorneys did their things, we did ours. We're simply renewing, continuing a long-time relationship, which we have had. For that reimbursement that we get from them, I will move it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Cordiak. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cordiak. You know, there's always something new and interesting that comes up in some of your reports and I think it just highlights the vast array of services and areas that county government is responsible for. And this just happens to be just one more of those.
I appreciate it, Madam Chair. I will comment that sometimes I do embellish my reports. County government's so many, many things. And then just want to make sure people understand what's coming forward, what's moving around there, what else is out there. I enjoy keeping you informed. Thank you for that.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much. The next item is to consider approving contract. It's a renewal with Arthur J. Gallagher Risk Management Services for insurance broker services for an annual amount of $35,000 for a one-year term beginning October 1st, 2015. And I'll have an automatic renewal for one additional year unless terminated by either party. And we've been very happy with the services, so I will move approval. Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Commissioner Cordiak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
A motion carries. The next item is Resolution 2015-105, a resolution adopting the proposed property tax levy for program year 2016. Is there an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer it.
Resolution has been offered by Commissioner Schulte. Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Look.
I have a few comments here. I think recently here I saw a fallout shelter sign, I think it was more in the basement of the, of the building here, and I think it's more designed for natural reasons, natural disaster reasons. But if we could put on their political fallout, that'd be nice too. Simply because I think we're somewhat faced with a bombshell type of approach here at the county as it relates to the state. We, I think every year, we kind of sit there and cower just a little waiting to try and understand what the state is going to come up with next and what they're going to try and impose on us and what they're trying, going to try and say, this is what we want to have accomplished, and yet there's no funding. You're going to pay for it and it's got to be done. And I, and I am frustrated with, with this system that, that we seem to have. People often comment, you know, why do you waste so much money on lobbying? I know there's, there was in the past and in the, kind of a rundown of different governmental agencies and what they spend on lobbying. And ladies and gentlemen, I want to be clear, this is what we spend lobbying for. Because, and I'm, and I'm constantly reminded of, of the, the movie A Few Good Men where Jack Nicholson says, you can't handle the truth. And I don't know if some of you have seen that movie or not. But the fact of the matter is, is from a political standpoint, the bullets that we dodge down at that state legislature because of our lobbying efforts translate into very, very real money to our constituents. And this is one more instance where that's happened. There is an increase in, in human services, transfer of costs that equate to about $2.6 million that the state covered before and now said, we still want to provide it. And they're good services, I'm not, not knocking the services. They're very important services for mental health, child protection, and everything else. But whereas the state used to provide the, the funding for this and then said, county, you need to execute. Now they're saying, county, you need to execute and provide the funding for it and you need to account for $2.6 million roughly in your budget next year to do this. And in the wee hours of the night, as the bill gets passed, people are unaware of the fact that this is now your new financial reality. And, and we get to now struggle with not only the increased costs of county services that we have. If you look at county government, on average, it goes from 2% to 6% every single year, keeping everything flat and level. And what is that? Well, your increased health insurance, trying to be competitive in terms of raises, increased cost of fuel, electrical, et cetera, et cetera, no different than you see at home. Marginal increases. And so we struggle with trying to keep our costs down and trying to come in with a, a responsible levy. And then in the 11th hour, we get a two-by-four upside the side of our head saying, you're going to eat another $2.6 million. And this is the frustration that I have. We have this year, as was discussed in the Finance Committee, we've had savings and debt service, where we've rapidly been paying down our debt to account for savings there, where we haven't had to make those payments. We've had savings in health insurance, we've come up with creative programs in which people can assume a little more risk because maybe they don't go to the doctor as often. And why pay so much in premiums if you're not going as often? We've implemented some health workout facilities downstairs for, I know Jerry's in the audience here. He and I see each other down there, have seen each other. Got a little knee issue going on, but nevertheless, we see people down there making use of these things, these machines are widely used. And what does that translate to? That translates to savings in our health insurance premiums. We had a 5% reduction in our premium this year. Unheard of. Fantastic. All of which helps to go to plug that 2% to 6% natural increase in government cost. But then, we've been responsible, we've been trying to, you know, make sure that our budgets are in line. And then we get hammered with a $2.6 million increase. And then we get hammered with a $2.6 million increase. And this is the part that, whether it's, now it's human services related. It used to be fiscal disparities. Where is that coming in? Who knows? Let's pray and hope it doesn't hurt us. Now it's the state out there crying, "Hey, we got a surplus, folks. Isn't that great? Wonderful surplus," while we just shifted all these dollars to the counties. So I think it's a little disingenuous for the state to sit there and, you know, claim success in their ability to have surpluses when in fact, they're shifting costs. And I have to make people aware of this because if at the end of the day, with a proposed 2.49% increase in levy, you say, "The county raised my taxes," you need to understand the backstory. Because this is the inside baseball, if you will, of why we have to increase these costs. And it's something that kind of rubs me the wrong way if you haven't gathered it already.
Thank you, Commissioner Look. Commissioner Cordyak.
As long as we're going to pontificate about this brief, Madam Chair, let me see. First of all, I will support this resolution today. But you know, I understand that, and I've been doing this long enough to understand that, we need to anticipate in county government. There's going to be things come along from any direction, from gasoline costs, a sales tax, the heaven knows what, that are going to be expenses that we did not anticipate. And we need to plan for that, and we need to save for that, and we need to budget for that. But, you know, this board has been very proud, and maybe it should be, about having cut, cut, cut $10 million out of our county board levy. Ah, be how be that. If I could do it on my household levy, I might be content. Along with it, though, in my view, we have cut services to the core. We've maintained our staffing, but we have diminished the services that we offer to this community. Cut it to a shoestring. Even we recognize, we sit here today, that we can't cut anymore from our departmental budgets. At the same time, we reduced our budget reserves, your savings account, the money you should have been putting in your back pocket to make sure you're ready for a rainy day. We really don't have much in the way of budget reserves to fall back on. That's not a very responsible thing to do for a $350 million operation, to not have much in the way of budget reserves. You know, we've cut our base over time. Now, we have affected county government for, it'll take years to recover from the position that we put ourselves in today. We're already crying about the worst year ever, which might be next year, though I've heard of that for 20 years. But I don't think we've left ourselves in a very good position, Madam Chair. And while this is an increase, and I commend my fellow commissioners for doing that, it's the only place we've got to go. We've cut everything else. We can't cut departmental activity. We can't reach in our back pocket. So the only thing we can do is raise taxes to make up the difference. We'll be doing the same thing next year, and the same thing next year because we've cut our base over the last years. And some are most proud of that. It is important to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Cordyak. Any other comments?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Schulte.
I would just comment that I'm proud of the actions that this county board has taken in past years to hold the line on taxes. I think correction in government at any point is important. You find out where it's bloated, where it's growing, where it's unneeded, and you make cuts. And occasionally, you go a little too far, and you got to correct. I'm not saying that's happened here. I'm just saying that's how it works. As far as the reserves, I believe that's an account that was set up recently, and recently funded, and now being used to help advance projects in the county, so we don't have to go out and bond. So I think that fund has been used for what it was intended for. I think prior to that, I don't believe there was a reserve fund. Aside from that, again, I will be supporting the levy increase. It's modest. It's 2.49. We're finding many, many counties coming in at double and triple that. I still think we are as efficient as any organization I've been with or worked for, and I'm impressed by that. And I hope we can continue that track.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner West.
I'd just like to point out to Commissioner Cordyak that the complaint is that the state legislature added on these expenses for us for next year, and then boasted that they had this, what was it, $2 billion surplus, a huge surplus, where they could have funded the things that they added on to us, and we wouldn't have had to take any more from our citizens next year. And we haven't made cuts this year.
Commissioner, I appreciate your observing that, but I've been sitting here for 28 years, and the same thing's gone on throughout that length of time, so it shouldn't surprise you that it'll happen again next year. We should plan for that.
Further discussion?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Gamache.
Thank you. This is the first county budget that I've been involved in. And I wanted to thank our Commissioner Jerry Stoma and all the staff that came before us for many hours at workshops to let us know exactly all the things that were going on. Because it really gives you the idea of the day-to-day operation of what happens at the county, and then all of the things that are coming down, and some of the unfunded mandates that are coming from the state. It's unfortunate sometimes, but we do have some responsibility. I know that there's going to be some changes, well, there's probably going to be some changes to the Minnesota Sex Offender Program, which will mean likely there will be some releases from that program. Although the legislature, I think, is still talking about that. But, and it does mean that there's going to be some expense probably to the counties where these people lived, came from, or who, I guess, convicted them. But, so it's unfortunate that some of those things fall upon us, but we do have to be prepared for those types of things. But there are some things in this budget, or that came out of the legislature last time, that were a bit of a surprise. But I also like the fact that we're looking at this budget and saying there's a time for some possible increases for employees of Anoka County who do the hard work day in and day out. And I'm glad we're able to see that in this upcoming budget. So with that, I'll be supportive of it, and moving forward, hoping to see better times ahead.
Commissioner Brassad.
Madam Chair, thank you. You know, when we're looking at how things are playing out, we basically would have been able to keep our budget pretty flat if it wasn't for the legislative changes in the cost shift. I am a little frustrated. I would, we did set up the Asset Preservation Fund. So not only buildings and such, I look at that as a savings account, much like families do with their savings accounts, you know, in their households. I personally would have liked to take more of that, to have a lower percent increase, even though much of this was out of our control. I think that savings put aside would come in handy in a situation like this.
Thank you. Commissioner Look.
Madam Chair, I just wanted to comment on two different things that was said here today. And the first is that we've consumed our reserves. I want to caution people to understand that we've set up, as part of the IT, as part of the Finance Committee, we identified three areas in which we wanted to fund on an annual basis, three accounts, where we saw expenditures happening on a regular basis. Your IT fund, which anyone that's served on the IT committee knows how much gets spent there. The Asset Preservation Fund, which is somewhat of a savings account, as Commissioner Brassad indicated. And the building fund. We know when elevators need to be replaced. We know when roofs need to be replaced. We know when parking lots need to be replaced, and so on. And so we're planning for that, so that we don't have to bond on an annual basis, as was previous practice. But we can account for those things and say, "In two years, we're going to have to spend a half a million dollars on a roof. So let's plan for that." Call those reserves if you want, but they're actually spin-down accounts, money set aside for those accounts. We still have reserves, and our credit rating is stable because of the fact that we still have reserves, and we don't tap into those reserves. And those reserves have not been spent down, and they've not been consumed. And so that record needs to be set straight. The second record, the second issue I want to talk about is service reduction. And, you know, my, coming from city council, a little closer than county to people, I think when you start reducing some of the services that you have, you kind of sit there and listen a little bit to see who's complaining. And if nobody's complaining, you might make the assumption then that it may not have been a critical service, maybe a nice service, but not a critical service. And so when times are tough and you need to make reductions, that's not necessarily a bad move. Matter of fact, it's a good and responsible move. When people are saying, "Hey, you can't cut this area," then you know that's a service that's more critical, and you need to protect that. And I don't believe that we've, I haven't received any phone calls, emails, or communications of such, that any sort of the reductions that we've had have been catastrophic by any stretch of the imagination. So I think the services, and I would challenge what services have been reduced. I know out at the Ramsey License Bureau, we've played with ours a little bit. When people aren't coming in, or you have one person coming in over a three-hour period, you probably need to pull that back a little bit because you're paying people for no reason. So I haven't heard any complaint on that basis, and I want to set that story straight. The third and final comment I want to make on this is, since 2012, we saved the taxpayer with these reductions in Anoka County between $37 and $48 million since 2012. That's money out of your pocket that's still in your pocket, okay? That you get to decide how best to spend. And when you spend it, you spend it in your local economy. And you help pay for your kid's education. You help pay for your kid's college, and you help put food on the table, and you help do the things that you need to do as a responsible family every single day. And that $37 to $48 million has enabled you to do that that much easier. That's something I think we can celebrate at this board. And to say that, no, we had $37 to $48 million sitting in a slush fund somewhere while people are out there struggling, I think is highly, highly irresponsible. And that, in fact, we did the responsible thing by reducing the spending. So, again, we're somewhat in a bomb shelter type of deal when we're trying to anticipate what the government's going to, state government's going to impose on us. I would like a constitutional amendment that says, "You come up with a new spending deal, you fund it." You don't go and stick it on somebody else and say, "It's your problem to fund it. We're just going to dream it up on our end here." And that is what is happening at the state, unfortunately, and it's pretty pathetic.
Well, thank you. I guess, in closing, I will talk a little bit about how we got to where we are at. Also want to address a few things. Not sure where services have been cut. We have actually done a really good job of maintaining services, and through various grants and so forth, we actually, because of state mandates, we have, at a time where we're trying to look for efficiencies, we've actually added staff in the area of human services, within child protection, within the whole waiver service area, significant numbers of staff, as well as to deal with the ramifications of the wonderful Minture system. We've also had to add staff. Reserves. We're not spending our reserves. Not sure where that's coming from. There is a difference between reserves and asset preservation. This county board set up something called Asset Preservation, a fund, in order to be proactive, to set dollars aside so that we could actually pay for smaller projects. Because previous boards, once or twice a year, would gather up all the projects together, whether it's an $80,000 project or a $2 million project. They'd all be gathered together, and bonds would be issued once to twice a year, which brought our debt level up significantly. This county board has not issued debt now for, I believe, it's three years. Again, paying down debt and making sure that we're looking at being proactive in managing our assets. We've actually done a building assessment of identifying what are some of the needs that we're going to have for maintaining the numerous buildings that county government owns. Setting those dollars aside, again, to be proactive, instead of being reactive to some of the things that, as happened in the past. Utilizing asset preservation to bring down the levy would not be responsible. Asset preservation is one-time money. You spend it this year, it's not there the following year. And some of these cost shifts from the state and federal government are not one-time shifts. They are shifts that will continue on year after year after year. This county board has worked very diligently to indeed reduce the property tax levy by citizens for county services. As mentioned earlier, you know, 2012, we reduced the levy by nearly $8 million. 2013, another million. 2014, an additional $2 million. There was a very fractional increase, 0.89%, in 2015. And cumulative savings of more than $37 million. In addition, at the same time, we had a cost shift from the state and federal government in human services alone, not counting any other cost shift, human services alone during that time period of $6 million, which we absorbed within our budget. Because we felt as though the economy was such, we didn't want to be the straw that broke the camel's back. People were struggling. Our foreclosures were at a record high. We were trying to be responsive to the needs of our constituents. And Commissioner Cordyak, you are absolutely right in that there seem to be cost shifts each and every year. The difference is that previous boards raised taxes through the roof when there were big cost shifts, and raised taxes through the roof when there were small cost shifts. There was never a time that taxes weren't raised, and we went back over 40 years. Taxes had always been raised. There was never that thought process that we need to make sure that we are not building up county government in a way that maybe isn't the most responsible. So this county board has been responsible in making sure that we are maintaining, I think, a very even keel in giving back to the taxpayers what they should be given back, and maintaining services and providing services at a high-quality level. And credit goes to our staff. You have done the hard work. You have looked at how we can take lean processes and build them into county government in order to provide the highest level of services possible. As we look to 2016, there is new legislation and the transfer of costs in mandated service areas related to children, vulnerable adults, and people with mental illness, which will require the county to bear more of the mandated responsibility in the way of cost. In Minnesota, counties are mandated to provide these services as an arm of the state. And the state continues to add to the county's responsibilities in this area. I think we recognize that every life is precious. And caring for our citizens, especially for our most vulnerable populations, that's a top priority of ours. However, new changes in the way that child protection is administered will also mean additional costs, including higher cost to screen, investigate, and manage child abuse cases. And those are things that we take seriously. And we are not going to decide not to provide those services because, as I said, every life is precious. And we want to make sure we're providing a safe environment for the children and the most vulnerable within our community. These shifts in services in responsibility will require the county to bear additional costs in order to provide these core government services. To ensure our most vulnerable citizens continue to be protected, the county board can only respond with an increased levy. It's a 2.49% increase in the certified levy. And that is after, as Commissioner Look said, absorbing some of the general increases that each of us see in inflationary costs. So with that, I appreciate all the hard work and effort of all of our staff in bringing us, I think, what is a very responsible budget. And with that, roll call vote?
Commissioner Brassad.
Opposed.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Opposed.
Motion carries. The next item we have is a Resolution 2015-106, a resolution adopting a proposed public safety tax levy for program year 2016. Is there an offer of the resolution?
Offered.
Resolution's been offered. Further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote.
Commissioner Cordyak.
Aye.
Commissioner Severaja.
Aye.
Commissioner West.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamache.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Look.
Aye.
Commissioner Brassad.
Aye.
Motion carries. The next item is to consider rescheduling the October 27th County Board meeting to Thursday, October 29th at 9:30 in the County Boardroom, 7:05. Is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. The next item, for informational purposes, the Anoka County Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting on December 3rd, 2015, at 6:00 p.m., at which the budget and levy for 2016 will be considered, and at which the public will have an opportunity to speak on the proposed budget. The next item is consider reappointing Don Jonas as the District 7 representative to the Community Corrections Advisory Board for a two-year term expiring September 2017. Is there a motion?
It's my great honor to have Mr. Chenas serve again. He's been a fabulous chair of that board and true stalwart on that Community Corrections Advisory Board. So I would ask that we approve him to that term.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries. And if there's nothing else to come before the county board, meeting is adjourned.